Meeting to order tonight, seven o'clock, Thursday, June 28th, 2018. Oh, I'm sorry, seven o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Seven central.
Yeah.
All right, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Personnel, resignations, retirements, appointments, and transfers, Mr. DePietro.
So the first order of business is just to tell you that you know that on our last meeting you authorized me to allow for hires in your absence until August 8th when you return. So two have happened since then, and even though there is a special meeting, the reason I think it's still best to do it at a full planned meeting is you already gave the opportunity. I've already contacted and told them that they have this position, but I thought this gives us the opportunity at least for me to introduce the fact that we were able to find two excellent candidates for two very important positions. You remember the trouble we have with business education? And we were able to secure Lou Calhoun, who's out of Griswold and has been working there. And he came back, he came into the field of education after having somewhat of an entrepreneurial and business experience, actually running some things like even like mortgaging. So he has a personal finance, he has a mortgage finance background, he has a business background, an entrepreneurial background, and he's been working at Griswold, had great references. We got to meet him, energy plus, and he's a third-year salary step. That's very good for us. You know, the difference being, you know, forty-eight thousand versus, you know, seventy-eight thousand, that's a pretty nice way to find someone who's got some experience and a great amount of business experience, bring in it into our business education market. So Lou Calhoun will be joining our Plainfield High School. And Abby Bennett, we just had one opening at the grade five where you endorsed the opportunity to bring back grade two and grade five because of our budget. Abby Bennett is a former educator with us at Musa. She was teacher of the year approximately five years ago, may have been six, because I've been here seven, so I'm getting old and I forget that, but she was teacher of the year for our district. Very exciting for her. She went into, some of her background was in the field of fashion industry, and her family has connection with that, so she went into that business, came back, a few years ago, came back to our area in Plainfield. And I know that Audrey Leview was on the committee and compared to four people, all with credentials, her ability to respond to the expectations of the interview committee was by far above all the rest of the candidates. Some with amazing credentials, but she has her own credentials also having been a teacher of the year. So we secured her, she's back with us, and she's joining us as a teacher at Plainfield Memorial School, grade five. So we are only two people shy of our recovery of the position. One is a PE teacher that we just, just gave us notice in June that he was retiring, so we need a process to get to that, and one other teacher that we're looking to recover in the system. So this is going to be a lighter summer since we did most of our hiring, and I think you'd appreciate knowing that our faculty is pretty much at ninety-seven percent recovery, so that's really good. These are all good people. But there is one person that we are going to bring before you because, and that's why we did it on the special agenda, because it has to be posted that there would be possibly an appointment, and we had an interview committee looking for the principal of Shepherd Hill Elementary. And there were a host, maybe as close as sixteen to eighteen. We filtered that down to the top candidates, and of the top candidates, three of them just stood out again as a significant level. We put some high standards. We wanted standards that these people had administrative experience. Although we want people who want to progress with us, you're walking into a school that is, you know, very developed. It went from being a category four to a category one school. It is our largest elementary school with four hundred and fifty children. It is the only school pre-K. It has the midday exchange. It is a magnet program for some of our students who need additional support, such as an IOP, intensive learning or responsive program. So there are so many pieces of it, you needed someone who would come in with some administrative experience and either a background in reading and/or special ed. And we found someone. We found three very good candidates. One candidate did take a position in Ellington, so we did not interview because she was off of that, she didn't want to put us through a practice. But of the remaining candidates, I am pleased to tell you, and she is with us tonight, but the person that I'm recommending for the position of principal at Shepherd Hill is Kristin Trahan, who was also a teacher with us, and she is both a reading interventionist and reading consultant, so she brings her certification in reading with her. She is presently an assistant principal in a early childhood center, pre-K K, which is our most recent development of universal pre-K and all-day K. We made that transition over the last three years, and that is her primary work in administrative leadership. The school system and the school that she works with for Learn just became NAEYC accredited, which we just went through that, and they just completed it, and she was part of the entire planning for and administration of that. She is a Plainfield High School graduate of 2001. So I don't know how much more you want other than when you eventually meet her in her totality as an administrator, not as a candidate to be as, you know, shepherd of a principal. I think you're going to see she has energy, commitment, drive, and she virtually started to cry when I told her she had a job because she just said, I can't say how important this is. How much more can you want with someone who wants it that much? And so anyways, the person is Kristin Trahan, who is here. But you're going to have to vote, because you have to write under the special, because we listed it, that someone would make the motion to accept the recommendation for Kristin Trahan to be principal. It would be effective July 16th, because she was able to accelerate her release from the other district, give us more time for planning. So if anyone of you would like that.
Well, Ms. Trahan, would you like to say something?
I would. I'll stand up for it too. And Kristin Trahan has, as you know, the features that I am a 2001 graduate, and, you know, when this position came up, I wanted nothing more. I put this in my cover letter, and I think I've said this in all the interviews that I went through, I want nothing more than to give back to the community that really helped shape me, and I'm passionate about this community. I live in the town right next to here, I serve on the Board of Education there, and, you know, thank you all very much. This is a thankless job that you do, and thank you for volunteering your time for this community. So I'm honored if you would appoint me, and I'm thrilled to get to know each and every one of you.
All right. I believe that we expect Kristin Trahan as the principal of Shepherd Hill Elementary School starting June, July 16th.
Why?
I can move her up.
Motion to main and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, welcome aboard.
All right. Who's here with you, Steve?
Yes, so I have my mother-in-law, who graciously helps me with my girls each and every day, so I appreciate her, and my mother, who has been my biggest supporter, and my two daughters, my husband would be here, but he is traveling for EB right now, and he's in Portsmouth, so he's sending me his good vibes. But this is my daughter, McKenna, who is three years old, she's in the pre-K program in Volentown, so I'm very familiar with that age, and my daughter, Olivia, who will be eight very soon.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business, solar project review in action. I know Ms. Tendrick is here as well, and I just want to point out that she is an executive member of the Board of Education, so we'd like to include her in any of our conversations tonight regarding the solar project. So just let us know if you want to say anything or questions. All right, solar project review. We had met with Michad Law Group for a meeting, and after our last meeting where we had a lot of questions along with Superintendent DePietro, and we were able to get all the answers to those questions and talk a little more in-depth about the concerns that we had. I don't know if there's anything that you want to add.
Well, because the public is only learning, thank you, thank you, by the way.
I have to eat that dinner.
But, right, your school is one of the schools that's getting solar, so, so no, this is good for you.
Yes, our school has, yeah, so.
We look to the electric bills for Shepherd Hill, so. So because the public, some may have or may not have come to our last meeting and heard the questions, but I think it's important that we just kind of highlight. The two biggest questions that I heard from the board, one was that you saw that the roof panels, if installed where we had sufficient new roofs, and most of our schools have that, seem to be a purview of the town to consider putting them on our roofs. They do not distract our instruction because they are sitting way above, not accessible by our students. And so that was the lesser of the concern. The bigger concern was if we put them on the ground, if we put them as canopies, did you have enough information to know about them? Are they being successful? Are they useful? Can they be damaged? Do they interfere with some of the things we have with our surveillance? Having met with them, first, the ECC building, our roof is approximately sixteen years old, and even though there is added life by putting a solar, the twenty-year concept of a thirty-sixth year roof is somewhat limited in expectation. And they do have the opportunity for canopies, but to do that and to get to the public, I don't, I didn't think we could give the board sufficient knowledge that everybody supports a decision you would make, or that I would have to your authorization. They felt that if they took the canopies away, there isn't enough recovery of funding, there's not enough cost offset to make that cost effective, so they would remove that from the immediate implementation of this project. It would not sit in what you're authorizing for me in terms of ECC as a building or the canopies. The same thing of, I'm sorry.
What is a canopy?
A canopy is, I should have them do it, it's better, but it is, you've seen flat panels that stick up on the stanchions, and they could be like a carport, if you actually drove your car underneath something that gave you shadow and protection from the rain. They sit similar to what a carport is, but that whole panel would be solar panels, and then they connect into turning that power back to the school, so it wouldn't have to be on the property. You may have, but, yeah. So if you can picture sitting underneath an open carport, like an open garage, it would be slanted because it has to face the sun, but all that canopy that would be done would have solar panels on it. And our board, when they did, had questions of, picture that in the parking lot where teachers, not students, where teachers are parking and parking underneath it. We have surveillance cameras that try to keep protection, but those could be, we'd have to find another way to handle that. If students, because it's on the ground, felt that they wanted to interfere, we didn't just have enough knowledge. It's not that the idea is wrong, the board didn't have enough knowledge, given two or three days, to be able to say we can authorize one person to act on our behalf on a canopy. So basically, the question was, is that something that is absolutely must-have right now, is that something that would be further thought of? And they agreed that that is something that would not be in this first stage, so if the board is authorizing the superintendent to ask on the board to make sure this project can stay on task, it would not include the ECC building, which is of some difficulty for us because of its age or its roof and the smallness of the land to put the canopies.
Right, you said the ECC roof is, got a shorter life, shelf life, but don't they take off the panels when you put on a new roof and then put them back up?
Okay, so these are good, this is why we're having this conversation. So we have the same question. So here are some of the dilemmas. When we did all the roofs, you have to go to the state because there's a seventy-six percent recovery. If we put roofing panels up there, and I don't know about the vendors how to do that, they would all have to come off. What is the relationship to the state when you're pulling those off? Do they consider that part of the damage to the roof? They're going to pay for the roof. So we had questions on our roof at PDMS that it wasn't exactly twenty-five years. It took twice the amount of time to get the roof repaired because they had to verify whether or not it was viable to pay for that roof. If we open up questions and we have damage to the roof and there's roof seepage, it could be that the vendor's responsible, but for this board to make a decision now that if they put that on there, that ten years from now, that the vendor will be able to do that, that the damage will be something that's their account recoverable, whether there's going to be litigation because maybe it was something we did, before they even put solar panels up there, they do the integrity of the roof to begin with, so they would have checked that. But it's too many questions for the future. I mean, that's the reason. Now that we question their logic, our issue is can the board give me the authorization through the summer to act on their behalf when we don't know those answers yet? And we also asked.
In addition, that once we remove the canopies from the ECC, there wasn't enough benefit of having just solar panels on the roof to where it made the cost-benefit analysis off. So it was just better for this building to take it off for now, in the future.
Right. And I know the layout of the building, there's only two areas. There is the area of the grass, which faces those families, and then there's the area of the car park on the side, which is probably where they would put the larger, they could, and that would face the other one.
Those things are horrible looking on the ground.
Yeah, and that's great, that's everyone's, you know, position, or position on that. But our issue is not about the integrity of their work or the town's interest, because we support that. Our issue is they're asking for the authorization, and the Board of Ed felt that in order to grant that authority to one person, when we don't know that and we don't have enough information, was just too precipitous, it was just too fast. So we asked, and they said that that's easy enough. It means that, you know, I would even be a guess, if it was four million dollars you might save and those pieces are not there, maybe three million. It's still a huge savings. The question is, and it's going to be done in stages, that might be a question further down the road. It's not a question right now, and it doesn't challenge their ability to get ZRec funding for the project. So two big questions. The other big question was, would they be working? Remember there was a discussion about they'll be in the fourth quarter of this year, and we said that would be like October, December. There's no way I, as a superintendent, could just suggest to you that it's appropriate to have the amount of people needed to stop doing construction on the roofs, whatever roof it is, whatever school. I'm sure if we had time, there may be some things, but again, all we did is pose this, and immediately they said, we can work this so that by the time they get all the approvals, get the ZRec funding, the vendor and the backer is in place, this is something that we'll probably be looking at a spring to summer, and that it doesn't have to stop before the school year ends. And if I'm not misrepresenting it, they said a project on a school of that size, even what they're looking at, is about an eight-week project, which is clearly a summer project. And because there's two different vendors, two things could be done simultaneously, or they could do multiple sites, so doing two to four projects is doable in the summer. So I'm here only to tell you what we learned, because you may still have questions, and that's why you're here, but those were the two biggest questions.
Will they still have background checks?
Everything. We explained, well, those were the, as we said, no one comes in, a building without background checks, they would all have to wear the right kind of insignia so that we know, because someone could come in and say, I'm with the solar panels, people, how do you know? So we'd have to do that, but because we said, that's the reason why we, they'll still have to do that, but because we were not doing this during instruction, this is something that would be designed around the least impact on instruction. Again, those are the right two answers to the hardest question. There are still many other things that we gave to you that said, you know, where is there evidence? We can go visit, they gave us an email of some communities, we asked why a Volentown had some challenges, they were aware of that issue of how, when you design a solar, it's not called, it's not solar garden, what do you call it?
Array.
When you put them on the ground.
An array.
A solar array, whatever, you put that, you're generating the amount of energy you think you're going to create. When it was designed, it was designed around the expectation of the amount of energy that would be used. If you don't use all of that, instead of actually making the benefit, you actually get a penalty, so you're actually losing the money. So our projects are all designed from a thirty-five to a seventy percent so that we would not be exhausting the amount of solar power that we would use. And then I'm going to end just because the substance you may probably had a chance to be, but I gave you an example and said, so we do about seven hundred thousand dollars per year, and we pay that all to Evers, what?
Seven hundred per month.
Per month, okay, seven hundred thousand per month. Huge.
Yeah, we have multi-million dollars.
Multi-million dollars, cool, that's good, okay. Sure, was it seventy thousand a month? Seven hundred thousand, I'm surprised.
Per month?
No.
The guy mining bitcoin?
Seven hundred thousand for twenty years.
Mining bitcoin. Well, we did more than seven hundred thousand because the savings is getting us the two hundred thousand dollars a month for twenty years, which is four million dollars.
That's one hundred thousand dollars per year, they were saying.
Seven hundred thousand per year?
Yeah, and you verified my numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You verified. It's all right, we're allowed to have this. All right. Retired, so I'm here, but I don't want the public to think we don't want. So the number, the number that we verified is seven hundred thousand per year. Because we pay all of that at a rate of about fourteen cents to Eversource. What's going to happen is as you build this solar grid and solar alternate energy, the amount of solar energy you produce is the amount that you will pay at the reduced rate through the vendor for what you produce, not Eversource. Eversource is still connected to all our buildings, we still have all the energy you want. If the solar power isn't generating, you'll be using more of Eversource. When solar power is generating, you're using more of your own. The energy we create will be at six point nine cents, and one of the questions we said is, how do we know twenty years from now that that's still going to be six point nine? Because that's the contract, and the contract with the lawyer says it's going to have to be met, it has to be met under the conditions in order to implement the solar project, and they would have to agree to it. It's also backed by a financial institution. And in order for the financial institution to invest and recover their money, they have to make sure that the system is maintained, it's functioning, and it's generating the power so that their profit is coming from the money that they save by still selling you the power you generate, and it's sent, yeah, it's sold at six point nine. The difference between seven cents and fourteen cents is half of it, so you figure if you are generating even only fifty percent of what you need, you know, which would be thirty-five to seventy, and you're paying only seven cents for that fifty percent, and the rest is being paid to Eversource, and you multiply that each year, two hundred thousand dollars for twenty years, it's going to be four million dollars. And so that's really what's happening is, you're never losing the Eversource. What you're doing is offsetting the need to go to the power grid of Eversource or the states and the vendor's opportunity to bring energy, because you're going to be offsetting that by bringing in your own energy, which is solar generated. And you're actually generating the source and being charged for the energy you create through your solar. If you exceed it, you're going to create problems in terms of the cost savings because there are penalties, you're not supposed to be exceeding the, what you should be getting from the grid. And I have my own thoughts on why, but I don't want to say it because I'm probably wrong. I do know that what we learned from them is where a district might have planned to generate up to eighty or ninety, and then their power needs reduced, they find themselves farfetched where they're generating more power. And you would think, well, you generated more power, doesn't that save you more money? No, doesn't work that way, not in the way the regulations are. So what happens is you have to remain lower than your consumption, so part of the consumption comes from Eversource or whatever electric company you use, and part of it will come from solar. We did, we asked, as I gave you a list, the questions we asked, you may have some others that you may be able to answer. What I felt most comfortable with is that we have enough examples and enough evidence of response that basically says, if you feel comfortable with knowing that the priorities or whatever other priorities you need assurance of, that those assurances have been given to us, and that the authorization is only to allow the vendors, the town, and the schools to work together as they plan for the implementation, for designing the system so that it does meet our needs, that it doesn't exceed what ZRec and the regulations allow for so that we do get the recovery, that the assurances and the contracts make sure that the recovery you get will stay in place by law. We asked, suppose one company goes out, and they said to us, if Bank of America, or give me another bigger name that's, you know, a big mortgage company, underwrote this entire project, they can't afford for the vendor to just walk away because that is their revenue, they will bring in another vendor, just like if you, if the company you got your mortgage with went under, they're going to sell it to another mortgage company. And it's the same thing that would happen, the person who's going to manage and ensure that the power grid is working for us, our solar alternative, has to make sure because the company who's backing this up is hugely financially responsible. There are no small vendors in the backup financial. So we learned a lot, and I apologize because it's hard when you're sitting on that side of things, and I needed all those answers as well. I can only give you, which I gave in writing, the fact that we did our homework in terms of making sure that you're not authorizing that the town's project is going to do something, do or not do something. You're only authorizing for us to be at the table in the voice of the administrator, of the superintendent, and with the town, that there would actually be the opportunity to engage one or two members of the board with us so that the voice of the board is always being heard, and we can offer the advice and counsel to make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps to protect the instruction of our children and the, and that the system will not interfere with our instruction, and that it will be designed so that it doesn't create liabilities.
I just have a couple of questions after that. Are we aware that you don't have to get power through Eversource? You can get through Dominion or Levco, stuff like that? Because I just got an email today, this is personally your school, you have a different, that Levco provides at six point nine cents instead of the fourteen cents. So with that going's total, we could save money right there. So I'm just wondering if we've looked at, you know, why are we locked into Eversource?
Well, actually, we're not locked into Eversource. And I actually have gone out for the revised contract for the next year. Do you remember? I think you guys approved that, for me to do that.
We may have.
And we discussed this.
Amongst other things you didn't.
With the consultants, because we wanted to make sure that I didn't get locked into a multi-year contract, which doesn't.
Yeah, like a year or two or something.
And then all of a sudden, we go into a solar project, and then you get penalties because you've been locked in but not drawing or giving them the monies that they need. So we've looked into that, and we've locked into a one-year contract, which doesn't give you.
With Eversource?
No. Right now, we're with Direct Energy.
Oh, that's right, I remember that name now, okay.
I believe Eversource is considered what, the carrier?
Just the carrier.
Distribution company. So yes, Stephen, we have looked at it.
Are there other questions?
Oh, yeah. Is this going to create any kind of responsibility for custodial staff?
None, zero.
Zero?
None.
Now, this is not a capital project, so therefore we don't need a bond, right?
No, it is a, it's a service, and it's not a taxpayer, it does not go to the taxpayer, but vendors absorb all the cost of installation into their twenty-year recovery.
Okay, now, this is just a service contract, and the lawyer is paid by the vendors, what lawyer?
The town's lawyer.
Yeah, we represent the town through engagement, and CSW is, works, is a subcontractor on the technical side, so we're paid. You were hired through the town.
You were, oh, you're, I thought you represented the company, you represent the town?
The town, yeah.
Oh, all right. What's ZRec funding? What's ZRec funding? Where's that money coming from?
So the ZRec is a renewable energy credit, which is a transferable good that is part of the renewable portfolio standard through the state. So the utility company actually purchases those renewable energy credits from the developer.
It's a little more state, I think he explained to us that the ZRec money doesn't come to us, it goes to the vendor.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, this is supposedly free to the town and the school, nothing's ever free, so how are you guys getting paid? Is kind of a question.
Yeah, so we're paid through the solar company that you select.
Okay.
They pay the fee.
And they get, and they get ZRec funding, correct?
Yes, exactly. So it doesn't come, it does not come from.
And the ZRec funding comes from the state and the utility companies and?
It comes from the utility companies.
From the utility companies, like Eversource and stuff.
The state, so on your, on anyone's utility bill, there is a line item called the OPS standard, renewable portfolio standard. That money is used toward acquiring these ZRecs, so the utility company is required to buy these Recs.
So they're already paying into it, correct?
Okay. This is utility money.
And what is ZRec?
Renewable energy. Correct, yes.
That's what it stands for.
It's R-E-C.
Renewable energy credits.
And our.
The Rec is the, so you generate energy, and solar is considered is a clean renewable energy. So the Rec, or in this case, the ZRec, but it's really a Rec, it's a Rec, it's the green attribute of that energy. Compared to, compare that to a fossil fuel generating plant that's dirty, that just generates energy, but because this is clean energy, they associate a Rec with it, which is the green attribute, and under Connecticut law under renewable. For all the standard Alan just talked about, the utilities are required, for example, by 2030 to purchase forty percent of their energy from these Recs. So the state, the utilities need these Recs to purchase, and these, that these projects help the state need its renewables. It's a state policy. So an energy company right now can get their energy anywhere and pay for it anywhere they want. Ultimately, they have to have forty percent. they want. Ultimately, they have to have 40% purchase. So every homeowner or every CEO has solar on their house. If you do it, they have to purchase enough of them so that 40% of the cost that they bear is in renewable energy, which is green. And so everyone who gets into this, they have to buy them and then when they buy that, that's how you get your savings.
That's right. The state is encouraging these systems. They want these systems developed through towns and everywhere.
You said Volantown has it?
Volantown put in a solar farm of sorts.
Grandma.
And other than their problem with the two generation, did they have any other concerns?
Two things can happen, Mr. Presley. One is, in one case, we learned where a district did not do the right analysis of how much energy.
Right.
So if you're supposed to be producing $200,000 or 200,000 kilowatts and then you build a solar farm that produces 300,000, there's a whole problem with the whole renewable energy credit process because you're overproducing what you can use. You have to be below your usage because the same...
Yeah, the regulation thing with the state.
Regulations, right. So that's one. In the case of Volantown and actually had someone from the board in here who just joined us there, but their projection of what the solar would produce and their usage that they had was off and they're actually producing more than they should have used. They can't, they can't use all that they're generating. So they're losing the credit piece and they're basically pretty much flat. And they're a little frustrated because they expected to have monies. They didn't plan for the 30 to 70% so that it would have that. And sometimes a school district plans and then says, "Okay, let's put all of these energy savings in. We already did an energy order and we're doing a new one again so that we know that if we're saving at 60%, we might, by some energy reduction, might be at 80, but we still won't be at 100 based on the designs."
Right. Just inform us a little bit.
It was well done by the town and their vendors. I mean, they did a good job.
But instead of being at 60, it might be at 30.
Like at the high school, it was going to be 70. By not putting canopies, you'll only be at 35 to 40.
The fact that we have taken out the canopies has helped too to ensure that we're never going to have too much.
What if we don't, my point is, we install this and we estimate we're going to have 50% savings.
Right.
And we budget based on a 50% saving. And one of, that saving is not 50%, but rather 25 or 15% saving. And we budgeted thinking we're going to save 115,000 when in fact only saving 25,000.
So you're right on, you're right on target. The challenge Ron will have, I mean, they have a different insight, but the challenge Ron will have for the board is in the very first year, you're going to see the generation it has and there are fluctuations. In one month, you may be drawing a little bit more from EverSource and maybe the worst of all winters and dark and whatever, you may be drawing you off from EverSource at 14% or wherever we went to, whatever company, because our solar may not. But over the course of a year, and that's why Mrs. Neil and I had a conversation, it doesn't, it's not standard. You're not paying, you know, 30 or 80 dollars a month. You might pay 130 dollars a month for electricity and next month have almost zero. That's what can happen. So it is going to take a year for us to standardize for you what the projection is.
Yes.
It is going to take some time.
Well, that also with the reduction of those canopies, you said there was going to be $4 million saving over 20 years, and without those canopies, has that changed?
It will. It will drop to about 3 million. A little, maybe a little over 3 million.
The original estimate was 4 million five with the canopies.
Without the can, now we're 3.5? That's the new number?
I think it was about 3 million.
About 3 million.
We don't know exactly because it's going to take a look exactly what they put.
Let's assume electricity 20 years from now is at 14 cents.
No, not us. Part of the calculation is a 2.5% annual increase.
Oh, really?
Okay, so that's...
Oh, wow, okay.
What happens to the benefits?
Well, we're locked in once we sign this.
Right, for 20 years.
Only what you produce. Do you, do you hear that, right? If we only produce 200,000 kilowatts but we need 400, the 200 will be at 6.9. The other one's going to be whatever the market rate is. We can't control the market rate because we still need supplemental energy. But, but you are going to pay the higher rate if it goes up or down. We're going to pay that.
Yeah, you don't want to pay the upper down rate.
Right, the other one is standard.
Well, I think there's some well-placed concern there. If you're looking at counting on these savings as part of the budget process, then you want to have some confidence that you could achieve those savings, you know, with 30 to 70%, whatever. You know, this is a town initiative. Maybe the town can help track this and if there's a significant shortfall, the town can help fill that shortfall if we're really...
How do you budget for that?
I would say, there is a production guarantee that's part of this contract. So there is a, there is a buoy there.
What is that?
What's the production guarantee?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we negotiate this in every contract. It's a production guarantee, which means they say their production, they're producing X million, whatever, kilowatt hours a year.
The vendor?
Yeah. They have to, it's usually 80 to 85% of that. They have to produce that and deliver that to the town. If not, they have to pay us, they pay you, I mean, if we're at a penalty equal to what you had to pay extra for the utility.
So we have to pay $1,000 for utilities because they failed. They pay us that.
They pay $1,000. And this helps that financier create the onus to the developer to respond for maintenance or...
Who administers that credit?
EverSource.
EverSource would do that on their, they have.
Oh, the production credit?
Yes.
That's, that's built into the, into the contract.
The vendor, that puts the panels on.
To the solar vendor, not EverSource.
The solar vendor.
Solar.
Correct.
It's hard because we're, people are learning everything at the same time, so...
So is there a transmission fee that's included in the 0.069 kilowatt rate, 100 kilowatt rate, transmission fee from the panels?
I'm not fine.
Every bill you get says this, an item and a transmission.
Yeah.
He wants to know if there's a transmission.
Yeah, so what happens is that, because you're self-generating, if you look at your bills, any, any portion of the bill that's, that's K W H, energy-related, even the distribution and transmission components, they, that, that they're all sort of indexed to how much energy you consume. If you're self-consuming, they all go down. That's why you're getting that, that energy savings. So they, they all, it's all, because you're going to be purchasing less than the utility, those distribution and transmission components will all go down. There are some components, demand charges, fixed charges, that don't change. You'll always pay them, but anything connected with your energy usage will always go down because you're lowering your usage.
I'll follow the question. On the, on the utility bill, if you were to look at your bill when you get home, you'll notice that there are six or seven line items that reference a K W H. All of those will receive the impact of this system.
But you're not transmitting to yourself, so there's no transmission charge for solar to solar. That was his question. Is there a charge of transmission for your own solar? But there is no transmission because you're generating it on the property.
That's right.
But you're missing them. Throw us to this question.
Got it. I follow those. Thank you for clarifying.
But you're self-generating.
I suppose it might not be out of the question, but you wouldn't be willing to disclose what exactly the generation rates and cost on your side is and...
What, our rate?
How efficient the panels are, what the, because I'm assuming that part of what makes this profitable for the solar companies is the fact that the panels are going to be generating at a more than efficient rate at what we're going to be paying for the electricity. Would you be willing to disclose that efficiency?
So we, we're not developers, but I would just say that we're not developers, one, two. The other I would just say is, if you want to go.
Yeah, so we were hired, we represent you. We, we helped select the best solar companies at the best price and, you know, based on the criteria of the RFP. So whoever we end up executing the power purchase agreement with, those companies, they, they know their costs. I think they're, I don't know if they'll give away, if they'll give that information, but I think generally, correct me if I'm wrong, but they generally earn like a rate, an 8% return, I think around.
It depends. It depends on the company.
I would say that there are publicly traded developers in this space. Feel free to do the research, but that is not a question that we dig into with the providers, developers that propose.
So here's my, here's my concern. You don't use the same computer or software that you had 20 years ago, right? You certainly probably could, but if you were to enter into an agreement where somebody pays for your computer or a whole series of computers for your organization in 1998, you got Windows 98, you got the latest state-of-the-art stuff, it's a nice savings probably for the next three years. But if you're still using that system 17 years down the road, then you might not be incurring any more costs per se, but you're missing out on a world of efficiency that can probably be expressing some significant monetary value. So...
I would say that's why the production guarantee is there, right? So that is all part of what goes into the contract today and carries through 20 years.
I guess I fail to see how 20 years from now, that this is the best option for the town and the board of bed to be looking at saving electricity. It might save us significantly the next three years. I'll grant that. But, and looking, and I'm no expert, but the quick, quick, you know, homework on the solar industry, the amount of money that's being put in on the federal and state level in the way of subsidies and just international interest in alternative and green energy routes, this is an industry that's gaining a lot of speed and it's being pushed along by virtually everybody, those who have the luxury of taxpayer dollars at their disposal and those that are privately financing it. I see a lot of similarities to the computer industry of the last 20 years and I see very little in the way of a strong argument to tie ourselves to panels of today to anticipate meaningful savings any more than three or five years down the road.
I, can I give you, I guess, is there a question? Because...
I'm, I'm, I mean, you, you're representing the town. How is this in our best interest?
You are going, the town will save approximately three, three to four million dollars over 20 years. That, that's, it's a calculation. It will, it will happen. What's happening with technology is the panel, correct me if I'm wrong, what's happening with the panels are all standardized, but they are getting more efficient. So yeah, 10 years from now, you'll probably be able to generate the same energy with less panels, but that's all, that's what's going to happen. But you are, if you lock in today, you are going to save three to four million dollars. If you don't do it, you won't save.
So how, how would it not be a better option for the town to possibly look at purchasing panels outright for three or five years and then progressively move with updated technology?
So just so I understand, is this a question of technology or a question of finance?
It's both. It's both because they're interlinked from the town's perspective. There's a lot of school buildings and if this is going to be a meaningful potential savings, we want to maximize those savings. Three and a half million dollars, you know, over the course of 20 years is chump change. There's a lot of stuff that you're going to factor in when you look at inflation, when you look at the state of Connecticut and what's being, you know, dealt out at Hartford in terms of additional subsidies or what's being allocated to the towns. This is, I think, a 20-year commitment to this that where you're, and I understand that the fixed rates, it looks good, but in a field that moves very fast and none of us here have crystal balls to be able to tell exactly, I could be dead wrong, so could you guys, and we want to avoid making that mistake here.
I would say is, on our side, as the subject matter experts that have done over 15 of these across the state, that there is substantive, real tangible proof that there is savings. So I'd say that first and foremost. I would say secondarily, to the technology end of it, to Paul's point, it's more about gaining geography footprint. So you're gaining more efficiency in terms of module output, but I think to the superintendent's point, we are trying to be intentional on capping the production of these systems to not end up in a scenario where there is an additional cost to the town. So I don't know that from a technology standpoint, I understand and respect your point on laptops. I don't know that it's a one-for-one comparison in solar.
It might not be perfect.
Yeah, and I look at it from practical, non-technical. I'm just a lawyer guy, but you get, we're, we're, you know, this is a fixed rate at 6.9 cents. You, there's not much further, that further to go down to zero. And you're, you're getting a really low electric rate. 6.9 cents is very good. And so the risk is only between 6.9 and zero. No.
Let's say, going back, we said, all right, you know what, we're going to buy this stuff and put it on the roof. That way we can replace it in five years. What would the cost be?
So I would say maybe to Matt's point, you know, there are subsidies involved that do make this attractive, both on the federal end as well as the utility, which is not public. But the point being, those are benefits that the municipality would receive as a nonprofit entity, that a for-profit entity would be able to realize where a nonprofit would not. So there would be significant cost increases.
Specifically, 30%, there's a 30% federal investment tax credit that the private company can take advantage and that's how they can lower, will give you a nice price. The municipality, if you bought it, you could not take advantage because you're not...
What's there going to buy? I'm going to go to the taxpayers and say, you know, how much would it cost?
But wouldn't we be then, we would have to take care of the...
It would be millions above and beyond.
Millions, so...
It'd be liable for us.
And then in five years, it's going to be obsolete. We're going to pay another million. Yeah, that's, that's what we're getting at, so...
That's a good point, yeah.
At this point, would we be willing to bring this, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent to act as the agent for matters related to the south solar, the town solar energy project and matters related to schools and school facilities with the understanding that solar canopies have been withdrawn from the initial plans for school facilities and that the administrative offices at 651 Norwich Road have also been removed from these plans.
Is that, you reading that from what he sent in the email there?
That would be the, the motion. We just want to make sure that it's very clear that this motion removes those canopies and removes the ECC.
So I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.